Welcome, welcome. We will go ahead and get started. Please stand. I will do a prayer. Please bow to your heads if you would, and I pledge. Gracious only Father, we come to you now and we just give you thanks for this community, for its staff, for its residents, and we ask you to be with those who are just in need of your loving arms. We ask you to be with the families of the lost residents and friends. Be with their families and friends through this time of loss and just guide them and direct them and give them praise. We ask you to be with our residents and this council and our decisions, and please bless this community in each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Bailey?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Eggly?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Thank you. We have approval of the October 7th regular council meeting minutes.
Do you want to do that? Can you do my amended agenda?
Oh, we have a vote for amended agenda. I think we changed it order to a resolution. I believe. All right, so.
No move. Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Now, we can approve the October 7th minutes unless anybody has questions.
Make a motion to approve the written second.
Roll call.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
You have a bills list in your packet. Any questions concerning that?
I do.
Yeah.
Did we figure out the one with the canine? Okay. I do. ADP on the 76, 87, is that, that's going to be underground now, right? But you'll still have the transformer box, the green box is sitting in the three by three box. Is that going to sit like where the pole is? Are they going to keep it over by the pump house or?
It's about 15 feet from that pole. There's a marker out there in the area.
Going towards?
The pool house.
Oh, towards the pool house. Ooh, why are they going that way?
I don't think there's any room. It'd be too close to that siren the other way.
Is it going to be in our way of pool operations and parking and things like that?
No, because the layup of new pool is, I guess farther north and then sets back farther west.
Okay. $1,800 for a hose replacement. What sewer is the headstock in?
Out here in front of Main Street Studio, around High Street.
We're going to dig it up?
At some point.
And ballpark number $600 for propane at the well field. What do we, what do we do with propane at a well field?
Runs the generator.
Oh. So you have to refresh propane? Or it hasn't been running that much?
Yeah, it runs every Monday, just like ours at the school. My ham runs every Monday per test.
Off you have to refill.
Then this is the second. Well, this is the first refill. It was filled once when the well field was done. So this is actually the first.
When was it done?
November of last year, almost a year.
Almost a year, that's cool.
It's a thousand gallon. Yeah, thousand gallon tank. Of course, you like to fill them to 80%.
Last one, six mil for $3,300. What's that for?
Construction administration.
Are they about done?
Six mil?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what our remaining balance is. It's got to be getting close.
I looked at that last week sometime. Are we just going to leave the chicken wire up? That's, doesn't get finished off or nothing?
They call it like bird screen.
Yeah, no, it's purpose. It just looks tacky. Okay, but that's all I got.
I don't think anybody else is going to see the bill for the finished product under there.
Anybody else have any questions for Cory or Cheryl about the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. Roll call.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Boards of commissions have none meets. I'm sure there's a pop-up anywhere though. Okay, council committee reports.
Sorry, I didn't get the minutes out. I will have them available for the next packet. And then we are scheduled to meet this Thursday, the 24th, at 4:15.
What group is that?
By finding. Oh, yeah, budgets.
We've had a few.
Three meetings.
Yes, thanks.
There's still something to add to.
Any other committee reports?
PFE met very, very briefly on Tuesday. Bruce got called out, so we're going to have to reschedule that. So I think we got about 15 minutes in before that went off. So I will get some notes out for them though.
All right, members of the board report.
I don't really have anything, other than this Wednesday, myself and the water department will be at the park with the plumbing company for the splash pad, and they're going to be winterizing that building. So it's going to be a learning field trip this Wednesday.
Leak pickup, when does that start?
Probably start at beginning of November.
Okay, I've seen some. Already have it along the roads. I wonder if that has started yet or not?
We have not.
Okay.
You send a notice out on that at all, or just kind of just?
When we get rolling, I'm willing to.
Send an alert. Okay. Any other questions for Cory? Then we're up to Rachel.
Okay, so we have second reading of ordinance 2024-17 by caption only to add an employee holiday.
Wow.
And then we have a second reading of ordinance 2024-18 by caption only to allow employees to be compensated for certain accumulated vacation credits. And ordinance 2024-20, first reading by caption only to amend the village water rates. And first reading of ordinance 2024-21 by caption only to amend the refuse rate. First reading of ordinance 2024-22 by caption only to amend the sewer rates. And we have resolution 2024-22 by caption only to amend the investment policy of the village.
The refuse, oh, I see. I've got two of these pages.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions regarding the ordinance that we just signed?
Thanks for getting all those typed up, Cheryl.
Okay, department has, Chief Denny?
So the only thing I have is Andrew Fritch is coming back as full-time from part-time. So then the, the lady I interviewed, I left her two messages to give me a call. I'd like to, if she accepts it, like to put her on as part-time.
Steph put you at full staff, though?
Yeah.
Can't remember.
Yeah, he came back to full staff. He created the spot when he went to part-time.
And when did he's coming back?
He'll start the 30th.
Did he go to, was he going to a different job and it just didn't work out and then?
Yeah, he came in and talked to me on Friday and said he missed it and made mistakes.
So he wanted to come back?
And I told him that he came back before I hired somebody. I put him back on at the time. So.
Any questions for Chief Denny? Thank you. Who's up first? Who wants to go first? Either Bruce or Garrett?
Pick.
It's been a while since I've seen you people. That's okay, chief. First question I had for you guys or a few of y'all was, I don't know where we were with the whole grant thing with the fire truck thing. Through the grapevine, someone said that y'all were in a debate on which foot, 100 or, you know, 75, y'all couldn't make a decision. I didn't know where y'all were with that, if y'all did make a decision. And is that deadline still by the end of this month as far as y'all speaking to?
Mickey?
Yeah.
Mickey has your cell phone number. He's going to call you.
Maybe we had a phone call with them last week when we had our finance meeting, and we'd like to have you and Bruce, when you guys are available. I know we might have to adjust our schedule to work with your guys' schedule, but that's what we want to talk about in finance.
Next thing, 504 is back. It was out at the shop. There was some things wrong with it, but so far, so good. So it's back in service. A few other things, if I'm not forgetting, kind of drew a blank. But anyhow, as far as uniforms go, there's, for gear, there's a gentleman coming on the 1st of November and on the 12th of December to do a demo and fit everybody who is needing gear. So between those two dates, hopefully the guys who need those gears, need that gear, will make those two dates. I sent that out to those guys. As far as that goes, we have some, we have some training that is being implemented by Tim Kuhn as a training officer, so that is upcoming. I've also made contacts for additional training as far as like burn, burn building and different things like that, but most of everything, not taking Tim Stunder away. He is a training officer, so he is heading up a lot of the training as far as that goes. Not a whole other lot. I mean, we're busy next door as far as apartment wise, but other than that, there's not too much more that I have to put out there. We're just driving. I did apply for a grant, SIG grant, Safety Intervention Grant, that is up to $40,000 and has geared towards safety-type materials as far as to make firefighters safe or departments safe. Sort of ranges anywhere from extrication tools to hose rollers to things like that. So not sure if it was granted to us or not. There's another grant out there. There was a turnout gear grant, but when I looked in the system, it looks like someone had applied for it. I, again, I'm going to try, but it was my understanding that within the village, I think there's only one, one entity that can apply for it, not multiple. But I'm going to call the, the people that's headed that, which is the Workers' Comp, Ohio Bureau of Workers' Comp. They're heading up some of those grants as far as that goes for the fire gear. The fire gear grant is up to $15,000 towards gear. And then again, the other grant is up to $40,000 for safety equipment. So that application for the SIG grant has been submitted. Don't know the outcome. The fire gear grant, I had not applied for yet because when I looked in the system, it looks like someone here in our village had applied for it. But again, I need to make sure multiple people can apply for it or in the same entity or no.
I believe it just goes by policy number. I mean, I've applied for the Safety Intervention Grant and the Safety Security Grant, and it goes by policy number. And it's up to $40,000 that they'll pay, and then?
That's on the SIG grant.
Yeah, $40,000, but it's a matching grant. They'll pay 75%, and the village has to pay the other 25%.
That was my understanding when I talked to the?
I'm not sure about the $15,000. Wonder if that's?
The $15,000 is called FEEG, Fire, Firefighter Exposure, Environmental Exposure Grant, something like that. And that's just simply maybe towards turnout gear and things like that. Our old turnout gear, right now, we, we have it stored down there in the basement here in the building, only because when I went to want to dispose of it, it has to be donated or sent out. I'm right now waiting for an outside person or agency to give me a call back because they say there's some programs, there's some programs that, excuse me, I'm sorry. There's some programs that can send gear overseas to countries and places that have zero, have nothing. They would accept anything. So I'm hoping to, instead of roamfully disposing of gear like I want to because no one would take it, because all of our gear is, that's over here, is expired. Everyone says, oh, we'll take your gear if it's not expired, but if it's not expired, then we ain't giving it to you. We, you know, we can use it. So other than that, we're moving forward. We still have seven guys in their EMT class. They're moving forward. Our firemen are still ambitious and showing up for calls, which I'm grateful for. So on the fireside, we're moving steadily, you know what I mean, and making small steps to, to be in a better department as far as that goes. Other than that, I don't, I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Derek. Anybody have any questions? Appreciate it.
So far for the year, we've had 580 calls. Last year total, we had 539. We are well on track for over 700, well on track. Just over the weekend, we had 12, which brings us up to 47 for the month. We are right where we typically are here lately. We're averaging anywhere from 60 to 70 calls a month. So far, our billing has built $284,054. We should see well over 300 by the end of the year. We have brought in $84,382. They have adjusted, so that means, you know, the government didn't pay their fair share, $67,788. So if you add those two, that's well over, you know, that's, that's about close to 50%, you know, that they were paying. And we have wrote off, you know, for, for it being, you know, whatever, that we just couldn't collect or whatever, $4,645. And that is, last year, I gave, I think I gave PFE the numbers the other day, but if you take a look at it, it's what the write-off amount is way, way down. So. Before I read this, so a couple of weeks ago, I told you about my health issues. And Wednesday, I did go to the specialist and with a straight face, told me I have the back of a 95-year-old. So our first agenda is we're going to be doing physical therapy, which I said tomorrow. And then we'll do the shot, and finally, we'll be doing surgery of none of the above work. So I know that there's been questions about it, so just wanted to let you guys know. There is no, no real timetable on anything. The specialist wants me to do five weeks of physical therapy before we do the shot. And then, you know, from the shot, if, if it works, he said you could go three years or you could go three hours. You know, it just depends. Each person's different. But he said that your back is very, very messed up. That was his terms. Over the weekend, well, actually this morning, we had a call that nobody responded to. Half an hour later, we had another call that nobody responded to. I'm just letting you guys know this before you hear it out in the public. However, about 4:15, I did, Bob and I did go on a, on a call. So we had three calls overnight last night, which quite honestly, that's, that's, that's an anomaly. But one thing that we've been noticing, and I think you guys have too because we have brought it up, is that if we get a call, usually within a half an hour, we're getting another call, half an hour to 45 minutes. And that's where the, that's where that issue is coming into play of not having people. I will say, last week, we had a three-car pile up outside of town. We were able to take both squads. Why? Because we had people. Last night or night, I had one person at work. I had just, I had had enough of the pain in my back, so I took a pain pill. Then I woke up at 2:00 this morning and saw that. I had been back to sleep since. I had one person getting ready to wake up at 4:00 AM to go to school, another person who was getting ready to go do their job, another person with kids. It's a, I guess, I don't want to say it's a perfect storm, but it's a perfect storm. You know, I'm going to read you something, and this, this comes from the DuVine County Fire Chiefs meeting. That was held last, last Thursday. EMS must be addressed. The sheriff spoke to the township trustees to motivate them. The West End is currently in a crisis. Run volume continues to rise and volunteer EMTs are getting burned out. The sheriff believes this finally has the attention of the elected officials. That is from the Fire Chiefs meeting. So don't be too surprised if you start getting a phone call from Sheriff Engel. Just one quick second. I, so I will say that Sherwood has passed their first reading of a resolution authorizing Sherwood to bill us, and I've heard that that can be anywhere from $300 to $400 per run for every tenant that they come up here. Now, that does not include mutual aid, right? If they're the first ones there, because, you know, we're out, out, whatever, they're going to bill the village $300 to $400.
Additional.
Right now, they don't bill us.
Yeah, there's no agreement.
Yeah, right now, there's no, there's no bill from, from Sherwood for them to come up here.
Wow.
Okay, so this would be $300 to $400 for them to come up here, you know, because their guys, you know, like I said, are getting burned out. Unfortunately, we had a situation a couple of weeks ago where we took somebody up to regional, and as we were walking in, walking out, Sherwood was walking in. The run happened here in town. So I'm just letting you guys know that, that the township, he has been in contact with the township. When I read this, this was news to me. I hadn't heard about it. So when I read this, I was, I was like, oh, okay, you know. So I'm just putting that out there. Yes, sir. Okay.
I don't fully understand. So you're saying that Engel has the answers?
I, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that.
So he does. We need to get him down here.
I, I'm just saying that, that he spoke to the township trustees to motivate them. I, I'm not, I don't know.
Motivate them to do what?
I, I don't know.
Out on their shoulders.
I, I'm not. I mean, are we supposed to go knocking on people's doors recruiting people to be EMTs or, I mean? So I will, I will say that. I, I will say this. I had a, I had a discussion with a very good friend of mine today who is also an EMS director, and they're currently fighting the same fight that we are. Okay? They are looking for full and part-time employees, just like we, well, we are. All right? For them, their budget to run, to operate, was quite substantially more than what we operate on. Granted, they have a much bigger area to, to cover, but I'm just saying that, that you're looking at people that are EMTs anymore are to the point that everybody's burned out. I mean, and that's not a Hickel, Ohio problem, but Bryan, Ohio, an Indiana problem. This is a nationwide problem. And I don't know, if I had the answer, I'd go to Washington and scream it from the top of the hill. So I know that there's been some questions about a guy that we were going to bring on another paramedic. Unfortunately, he's not, he can't pass his background check for the state of Ohio. So there is that. And the reciprocity, reciprocity process that I've got Rick in right now, the new guy, it's ticking forever. The state of Ohio, again, wants to know everything about you, including your firstborn name. So it's going to take a little bit of time, at least 30 days.
They have his background checked today. I've sent it to him.
Okay, all right. So I don't know, I, I don't know, short of, short of, again, talking, talking about doing a full, a full district, short of doing that, I don't know what the answer is. talking, talking about doing a, a full, a full district, short of doing that, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, we, we've talked about this a lot, Bruce. Um, I know you've talked about the other departments. Um, committee was gonna get together with you to discuss some of these issues, and you gotta run, you know? There's not been any time to, to re-meet and address some of these issues. But to find people local is gonna be tough, and to run the hours that you need them to run. The bottom line is, it's the late-night hours, it's the weekend hours, and it's the twelve days, you know, at night. The harder hours on the weekends, and that's a tough fit to get people to work those hours, so. Hopefully, we can come to a conclusion. I know the people we are finding know they run for other departments, so they shift back and forth when they can. The other departments are short, so they're asking them to work overtime, it's, you know, it doesn't last.
It, 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 it's a, because right now, most EMTs across the nation have more than one job. And sometimes they have more than two. Like Devin, Devin works full-time for Bryan Fire, runs part-time for Williams County EMS, and then also does part-time here. Alright, so he's putting in, he's telling me when he can do his hours. We have Rebecca, who's on a twenty-four-hour shift down at South Richland. Honestly, I would love to have her here. I think our, and I, and I'm gonna, we're gonna address this on Thursday and, you know, with PFP, but I, I don't think that we have a choice. We need to go to a twenty-four, twenty-four-hour shift. At least until March.
I thought your people were-
Well, you know what, Ron, at some point, I just gotta say, look, this is what we have to do.
Well, I fully understand that, but-
I, I, and right now, the, right now, the only person I would probably lose would be Abby. Um, but there's some caveats to that twenty-four-hour shift that the mayor and I were talking about, that I will discuss with you guys.
We don't technically have enough staff to even begin a shift like that. So, really, it's a staffing issue, not a, an hour, right?
It's, so you're looking at, it, it, it's, it's, it's both. I mean, because honestly, right now, everybody's, everybody is looking for full-time. That's what it boils down to. Rebecca, if I could hire her full-time, I, I'd have her here. Same as Chloe, I'd have them, I'd, I'd have them both here.
But would they be willing to run nights and weekends?
Yes.
Yes. That's what they, that's what they were running, was, was nights. And with the weekends, Derek and I have talked, and short, I, I asked the mayor this, I, and, and, and he said, I can't mandate, that I can't mandate people running on weekends. But I'm just wondering if I were to say, look, you have no choice, if, how that's gonna reflect, how that's gonna come back, you know? Is that a mandate, is that, you know?
Certainly sounds like it.
Yeah, it, it does, and-
Well, I guess, I guess I don't understand how you couldn't do that, because, I mean, the, the way that healthcare works now is you've got your weekday people who have to take call on weekends.
Yes.
And that's how I worked in surgery. So, I guess I don't understand why you couldn't structure your department that way, where, again, I think that that gets tricky, because you're talking about people being on call fifty percent of the time, fifty, once every two weekends, they would have to take call. I, that's a tough-
So, so, what you're saying is what I, what, is what I've worked before, um, with Prometica and Part View, and Williams County, you do a, you do a twelve-hour shift. However, to do a twelve-hour shift, we are nowhere near being staffed enough for that. And, quite honestly, the village's been a poor one. Because you're looking at, you're looking at, like, the shift I was on, I would be on Monday, Tuesday, then the other shift would work Wednesday, Thursday, and I would work Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, one week I was doing forty-eight hours, the next week I was doing thirty-six. That's how the, the, Part View does Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, as you're forty-eight, and then Sunday, uh, Sunday, Monday, or Sunday, Wednesday, Thursday, as you're thirty-six.
But you're talking full shifts, I'm talking, you worked your weekday shift, and then you were on call for the weekend, not on work shift.
Yeah, that, so, that has been brought up, and, again, uh, again, there's, it, it, there's not, I don't wanna say there's not the commitment, because they're, they're all committed, but the weekends are their, are their time. So, it's, it's- It, what's that?
It would be a tough sell, for sure.
Yeah, and it's hard to, and again, I'm, I'm just saying, it's a hard sell for a dollar an hour. We are in, we are in crisis mode.
How, how much would it cost to get Rebecca and Chloe to come here?
Full-time.
I don't know the numbers.
Huh? It, it would be, it would be, so you're looking at about thirty-six, I think it's thirty-six, uh, without any overtime. And then with, and then you have your, uh, your benefits on top of that, which are roughly right around forty-five, I think. Cheryl, am I close?
Well, it would depend on your time, if it's your computer sent to you today.
Yeah, it, it, that's where, that's where having those two, because like tonight, okay, at midnight, at midnight, I have nobody on. So, if I don't show up, or Bob doesn't show up, you know, again, I'm not throwing stones, but we have somebody in school and somebody with children, and that, and they can't get away as maybe easily as Bob and I can.
I myself, I'm available at nights when I'm not working nights, Link. So, I step in and I help cover the nights.
Which he, he did-
So, like this weekend, I just got done doing pretty much like maybe a thirty-six-hour shift. So, I did twenty-four, and then the very next day, I, I ran from home, but I was available from eight till the time I ended up after the grade, go to work, till four thirty-five o'clock.
And, and Drew does, Drew does his twenty-four.
So, Drew came in after I did, so I worked Friday night.
You and Drew, you're all existing. I'm talking, what's it gonna take to get some more people in here, money-dollar wise? We need to have money for everything else you'd ever wanna have.
You, you're looking at roughly, with benefits and everything, you're looking at roughly a hundred and a quarter.
A year for two people.
Yes. I, that's what I, that, I mean, without seeing the numbers, I, if you take, there, if you take the eighteen fifty-six per hour times a forty, forty dollars, I, I think that's roughly about thirty-six thousand for the year. And that's multiplying by two thousand eighty, eighty hours. That's before overtime, okay? However, that would give me an extra person here in a, and, and Rebecca saying, okay, I, I, I've got, now I've got two or three or four people, you know, that I can sit there and say, look, we've got to run these, we've got to run these hours.
Well, that's, that's the thing I was just gonna say, I don't want you hiring somebody that's gonna tell you when they work.
Right.
I want you to get some people that, that are dedicated, that, that, that the job means something to them. Uh, that's gonna be hard to find, but, uh, like I say, we spend money on everything. I'd much rather, that if I have a heart attack, I'd rather you had employees that could drive that truck than to go down there and dangle my feet in the pool. It's just, there's a lot of things, I, I'd rather ride in your truck than a new sleeper truck. We've got money for every damn thing you wanna buy, except things we need. And, and where we keep coming up with all this money for this stuff, new trucks everywhere, but we can't even afford to hire some people to save lives. It's, it's ridiculous.
I, I will, I will say this, and, and I'm sure that you guys, you guys see the bills. I, I, we are burning through supplies as well. I mean, and there's nothing I can do about that, with the increased run volume. And, and I will say this, if you ask, if you ask Darryl Rock right now, he'll tell you the same thing. Our runs are not, that our runs are not a, hey, guys, don't feel good. No, these, our runs are, I may be having to stop and innovate somebody, or I'm having to give multiple drugs on the way. Um, I mean, these are very serious cases that we're running into. And, I mean, it's, and, and at some point, we gotta sit there and go, okay, we need, we need more than just one paramedic in this town. Because unfortunately, and it's played out, I can't be everywhere at once. And I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that this is-
Well, you've already forewarned us that your time is gonna be very limited here, coming up with, with your issues. Uh, so, you know, we, we can't depend on, and, and this is not a negative thing, but we can't depend on you for anything.
Right.
I mean, and that's not negative, that's just-
Right.
I've got a million doctor's departments that I have to go to.
Right.
You're gonna, you're gonna come into the same thing, and you're not gonna know when that they might say, but this is it. You're, we're putting you in the hospital today.
Right.
You don't know these things, and it happens.
Right.
So, we've got to, we've got to realize that saving lives and putting out fires, people's homes, is a very important thing. Trucks, swimming pools, a pool, over three minute, three-point-five million dollars for something that you're gonna use three to four months out of the year? No, no. No, if we can come up with that kinda money, we can damn sure hire a few more people.
You don't mind me interjecting, I, you know, yes, we have a crisis, and we have a staffing issue, but we do have three advanced people going through class, but they won't be done until April, May timeframe.
We can't tell people to not get sick until April.
Absolutely, I get that, sorry.
The-
But then we also have seven EMTs. So, as far as the staffing goes, let's say forward to next year, if we were there, we have now seven new EMTs. We have three more advanced, or ALS, you know, not paramedic, but ALS providers that will help with the paramedic, that could do some of the job of a paramedic. So, this time next year, or, yeah, this time next year, our staffing will be substantially higher with the seven people graduating from basic class, and then the three advanced.
The, the biggest, the biggest thing, a- and I'm going to tell you right now, and, I mean, this is going on the record, in two years, you're gonna be over a thousand runs.
Why is that?
Because we keep getting older.
Just, just, just people, just people getting, like you said, people getting older, people, um, it just seems to be, again, uh, the people that might have drove to CMH, uh, aren't, are, are calling us. And, and I, I hate to say this, I mean, not really, but CMH, we were, this area was blessed with CMH. The EMS in this town was blessed with CMH, because we could do a, we could do a, a run in thirty minutes. Now, it's ninety-three average.
But we can't change that.
No, we can't do-
Gotta work past it.
Yeah, and right now, right now, our biggest issue is getting from thi- from this point, from this point right now to at least March, when we got seven new people, hopefully, um-
But you've been in this field long enough to know, and I've sat here, what many, many people say, too long, but, uh, how many classes have you seen that started out with six, eight, ten, and maybe get one?
Yeah.
Some I've seen, you got nothing.
Right, right.
Uh, just because they're in class doesn't mean you're gonna, you know, and, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, uh, you know, it, it comes April, you might be down to one or two, you might be down to nothing.
Your class-
I will, I will say, I will say this, when I, when I started my paramedic class, there was twenty-four of us in the class. When I, but when I ended, I was down, we were down to eight.
Exactly, yeah. So, we can't, you know, we can't, we can pray that it, that it happens, and we get seven out of the seven, uh, but we can't bank on it.
Right.
So, we need, we need to quit circling around the barn and go ahead and open them doors up and say, hey, people, we're hiring. We have to hire, we have no choice.
Yeah, but if you think your staffing's gonna be solved in March, what are you gonna do after March? And you're gonna have a-
Show me this, show me this staffing base.
The, the, here's, I will- I, here, here's the thing, let me interject this, let me interject this, Ken, and I understand what you're saying, okay? But all of a sudden, now you've got enough people, if you've got the all seven of those, okay? If you have all seven, guess what? Now, you've got enough staff, you've got enough EMTs to run both squads all the time. Plus, and we've talked about it, if both squads are out and we do have to call somebody, we can put a first-in bag, a first-in bag on one of the pumper's, and any EMT on that pumper-
Can respond.
Can, can go.
Can respond to that, so you treat until-
So-
But that doesn't guarantee that those people are willing to work nights and weekends. We free up some money and, and positions for you to hire part-time with the idea that they would run on weekends, and they're not doing that. So, ultimately, like, it's not just money. It, this is not just a money thing.
Okay, so, I will say this, it, y- yes and no. It, it is money, but it isn't, alright?
Pretty much is money.
Right, okay, so, what I'm gonna say is this, alright? When I worked over in Indiana, okay? And they offered me overtime. Alright, and I'm saying this for, for people that work, oh, sorry, they offered me overtime over there, and I could make forty-eight dollars an hour over there, or come here and make twenty. What am I gonna do? I love the village of Hicksville, but at the end of the day, forty-eight dollars an hour speeds.
Statistically, money doesn't keep people. The research is out there. Uh, everyone's chasing a dollar right now. You have everyone that is hopping from hospital to hospital on two-year contracts, because they can get a, a new, um, sign-on bonus every two years. You know this, you're coming from the medical field also.
Yeah.
Like, I don't, ultimately, like, it's a culture and environment that we have to create, and I do think that that comes with being fully staffed.
So, Neil, so, here's, here's the thing, here's, here's what we can do. We can go ahead and put money towards more full-timers to run from midnight to eight. And then, you know, then we, then we hire one or two more people, but we pay them, but we pay them more than what we normally would, because they're working weekends. Because you and I both know, coming from the medical field, that if, that working weekends, we got extra, X amount of dollars extra. If I work nights, I got three dollars an hour extra for working nights. Weekends, I got two dollars an hour extra, so-
Every factory's like that.
Yeah. But right now, there's no incentive, and I know Scott Kramer sat, sat over there one, one, one year, and said, told, was telling everybody, well, if you run the weekend, we're gonna give you a hundred and fifty dollars. Well, that never panned out. So-
We've had a lot, I'm gonna cut you off here, Brazil, but we've had a lot of discussions, me and you. Um, I've asked the committee to intervene, I've asked you to put numbers down on paper, we've had staff meetings. We need your department, your committee needs to come together and, and work up some of these numbers, some of these ideas.
Finance, we would love to meet.
Um, there's two people that are on finance, I think, that are on fire.
Yeah.
Um, you need to come with numbers on paper and figure out ways of enticing and having movement. You're gonna have to tell some of those employees, you're gonna have to work some weekends maybe, you know, we talked about that over there. Just mandatory. We're, we're in crisis mode, like you said, every, everybody needs to step up, um, and help. But in doing that, you know, I know, um, pay might go up, um, different levels of things, different ways of getting-
different ways of getting them to, we talked about different scenarios where sometimes to be home for a little while, but still be on call, you know, and work those hours that they need to be, but still be able to do stuff at home. So I'm asking you to get with committee and really have big sit-downs, I'd love to be there too, uh, with finance and, and this fire, and try to figure out a solution. Now, I keep thinking about the training, everybody we have on training, you know, that's a hit on your budget. We have a lot of people in training and doing different things with, you know, the cost of the training.
Well, some of the training, some of the training now through, uh, the state of Ohio is free. If we go through the state of Ohio, through the Fire Marshals Bureau, they just came out with $8 million extra for these classes. Now, these outside agencies, yes, there's a cost involved, but we go through the Ohio Fire Academy and the Fire Marshals Bureau, every last class on that website is free to us, as far as training goes.
The EMS though, EMS, we just spent, what, $20,000 putting, putting 10 people through class. But to get them, to entice them to be a local, you have to do it. So, but anyway, can we get together? Yeah, I will, so I'll wrap this up real quick. I, I, no kidding, I, I gave some numbers to, to PFE, so on, on Thursday, I will be here Thursday, um, to meet with you guys, to meet with finance, I will have some numbers for you, um, with everything.
Well, Bruce, if I may interject, and I don't know about the rest of y'all, but those numbers you gave me last week didn't really make a lot of sense to me.
Right, because I, I didn't have.
It makes sense for me either, they shared it with me.
I, I.
None of the raises made sense, none of it made sense. Up 35%, up 60% up.
Well, that.
They need dollar amounts.
So that's, I wish I would have been able to stay a little longer and I would have been able to explain those numbers to you, but I would definitely explain the numbers to you.
Do you mean come with the reason for the raises, how you had them figured out?
Those weren't raises.
They're all different.
Those weren't raises.
Tackle that animal next time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
This Thursday.
Can Kat and I get carbon copied on some stuff here, because we're the only two.
Well, no, you're the special counsel.
Yeah.
Before we are going to be here, I'll be here.
Yeah, we should just have a special council.
We ought to all be able to hear this stuff.
Yep, and we, you would all know whether to vote or not.
Well, you're going to have me vote on a budget, well, I have no say in it.
I'm all with you, kid, 100%.
Sound good to the rest of you? But I'll be here on the, at the table and listen to how we can solve this problem.
When?
When we going to do that?
No. Well, we need to get with the fin, I mean, well, I know finance is working on stuff, so.
Finance is sitting right here.
No.
When you want, when you want to have this special council? We already have a meeting scheduled at 4:15.
I, I gave him a note earlier, I mean, it's really critical that we have Bruce and Derrick available. I mean, we've met, we've had hours and hours of meetings with Cory, and went over all his budget items, and went with the Denning, we've talked with him, but we haven't had a chance to talk to you. And, yeah, I had a lot of questions on here on all your stuff.
I'm sure.
It's not projected wages, but none of the raises are the same for all your different levels.
Right, well, and, and those weren't really wages, but we can get into that later. Um, so, so come, come Thursday, I will be here unless we get a late call, but I will, I will be here. I mean, if that's, would, unless you guys want to do it different time, you got, just let me know.
I've got an audit Thursday.
Be met at four.
Fine, keep me up, keep me up, David.
Go.
Well, you weaseled out of that one, didn't you?
We just got them down there earlier that I could meet with the ordinance on Thursday.
All right. Let's sign off for Thursday then.
Okay.
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Bruce.
And the 24th is a surgery.
Thanks, Bruce. The park director's not here, so. Uh, fiscal officer report.
We have the fund status and cash summary in the middle of the month, so we don't have any, um, from reports.
Any questions for Cheryl? Nothing?
Mayor, I'd like to have a quick executive session before we close up.
On what matter?
Cheryl. Personnel.
Personnel, okay.
I have a question for Cheryl.
Hiring or firing?
What's your definition of short?
Eye turn.
Go.
Show in the paper. You can't just say we're interested.
She said hiring or firing. Disciplinary.
On that email, which one did you? Panel number seven?
Well, I got a couple of quick statements and then we'll move into executive, but trick or treat again, is this coming Saturday, October 26th, 4 to 6? Uh, the fire and EMS department's hosting a movie night next door at 6:30 that same night. Um, Feather Bingo is Saturday, November 2nd at the Fire Hall, it's a big thing for the, for the community, doors open at 4, bingo starts at 6. There's food, prizes, silent auction. If you want to help support the Fire Association, you can call 419-542-1348. Ask for Bob Meyer, he will help you with that. Um, and speaking about public records training, I know the auditors popped up and asked if anybody has done that recently. I have never done it, and I don't think we've had anybody else plan on doing it. And if you've done it one time, uh, but I will, but that was a while, a couple of years ago, was it?
Yeah, Cheryl, I send her all my certificates all the time.
Yeah.
Didn't we just do it first of the year? Pretty sure I did.
That was fraud, wasn't it?
We did the fraud, this is completely different. Anyway, um, we usually, we usually have a representative do that for the whole council. Um, I'd be, I've never done it, I, I want to do it for council and be the rep for this village, so I will sign that up in November, it starts November 5th. It's like a three and a half hour meeting, so, online training. But I will do that, but I'll have to register you all within that program and take care of that. They did bring that up in an auditor's meeting, so I will handle that. Um, yeah, got the memo about the flu shots with the employees at the pharmacy, um, you can do them tomorrow, rates between 8 and 12, but not Thursday, Thursday is canceled.
But any other day, you can go, he said, just any day at 12.
I recall him, if he's super busy, he'd run on maybe such a time where he can do it right away. So if you can't make it tomorrow from 8 to 12, I'll give John a call and he'll help you get your flu shots with the village staff. That's all I have.
Did Cory, did you get your speech to fame, you know?
Speech to fame.
I didn't know you got to talk that's night.
Oh, you did.
You paid attention.
I was sitting asleep.
Kevin Troyer, he's the gentleman, the young man that helped with the frisbee golf. They did an open house here this last Saturday, had over 40 participants, just kind of come out and enjoy the day, they had refreshments, but I wanted to thank Kevin, um, the people that helped work on that, I think the commissioners gave some money, Cory helped him with getting the plant set up for the park, so that's a nice new addition for the park.
Can I speak about that?
Yeah.
So Saturday, I took complaints from a neighbor, a frisbee flying in his yard and people walking in his yard, and as I'm there taking the complaint, he had a frisbee come flying into his yard. The post is right outside his backyard. It was a young boy that did it, and then I watched an adult throw it. On the next post is to the south, here on Spencerville, it's on Spencerville Street.
Right.
And then frisbee went flying in that neighbor's yard. The neighbor's upset, uh, and I see his point, it's very close to his property, they're going to be flying.
Real tight in there. I've gotten a couple in my yard already, and I, I enjoy the new frisbees, started to get a nice collection of frisbees, and I'm clearing the air side of the track.
He knows they're not doing it with intent or purpose, but like he said, he, you know, I'm working in my garden, and I get conked on the head with a frisbee, or, or they're walking through his garden like a young maiden walked right through his, uh, stuff around the trees, the mulch.
All right.
You know, uh, and the post is right, it's not going to be available.
You mean, uh, by the way, you call the hole and that even right there?
Yeah, the post with the, the ring around it, where the.
Thank you.
Do, yes, so.
That's something we think we need to move, or if it's going to be a role infraction on properties, I mean, I don't know, I've never, I've never walked up that far, but.
There's, there's not much room there because you've got the ball fence, and then the post, and then his yard, I mean, all those houses along Spencerville, there's two posts there that, uh, it's going to affect.
Is it a longer throw frisbee part of the, the team or?
Yes, it depends on how.
I know, I used to golf, I had a lot, I was in a lot of areas over the day.
No kidding.
You know, um, kind of thing, so. But yeah, we could take a look at it, I guess, and see.
I used to golf with a beach ball, because I knew it was near for the water.
I told one guy, in fact, asked me as I walked into his yard, and he said, stand on my yard, but while you're standing there on the road, before you get in my yard, and he goes, I'll sell you some golf balls while you're here. So he was, no thanks, he goes, you can have mine, it's all to somebody else, walked on, but, so, all right. So we'll take a look at you, so. All right, anything else for council? We have a motion for executive?
I'll move to adjourn.
You've got a motion. We have one motion for executive?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion for executive.
Okay, roll call.
Bailey?
No.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Like she put in the paper, I would, no.